It's seven o'clock, so we'll call meeting to order. And we have no public hearings and no delegations. Any additions to the agenda? Hearing none. Somebody wish to move the agenda represented? Ah? Any question about his motion? Hearing none. All in favor? Okay, moving on to the adoption of the previous council meetings of April the ninth. Any questions, errors, missions? George Lee? Any question on George Lee's motion? Hearing none. All in favor? Unfinished business? We have none for the agenda tonight. Financial statements, cash statements.
I have a question. Apparently where we should be at this time of the year. Someday you're gonna say no, and I'm gonna fall off my chair.
Well, as you can see that we do have, we still do have the reserves in place. And we're waiting until the next meeting. So you can set the mill rate, so that we can collect tax. Yes. For being the end of the year and we haven't collected our tax that yesterday. But you can see our notes on the map still has about $2 million available.
I saw the cash statement for intervention. Okay, you want to lose it? Any question on Lorna's motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
I was getting ahead of myself.
Yeah, it's carried. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the year-to-date.
I've probably been told this for, well, four times 12, so probably 48 times. But the school taxes, when are they paid out?
Quarterly.
Oh, quarterly.
Yes. So we collect once, like when we collect our tax. Because we do it with tax numbers, but they bill us quarterly.
Okay. So we hang on to it till they bill us?
Yes. Of course, they billed us once already before we collected tax as well. So that's why you'll see that we have an expenditure.
And will that amount change from what we think it is?
There was an increase, then we adjusted it in the upcoming budget, yes. A slight increase, and of course, we adjust that with the mill rate because we...
But does that change at 5.62?
Yes, it'd be about 5.9.
So, so that'll get adjusted?
With the mill rate.
When we said no?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that kind of what you were talking to?
Yeah, so then it'll be, the right amount will be collected. Like we won't be short.
Yes.
So if that's quarterly, is that, will that be the same rate for each quarter that we're, we're aiming?
They adjusted on their budget here. So they keep, they bill us quarterly. When they set their budget, they adjust it, and then our quarterly payments past that are adjusted to their rate.
And when did they do their?
Well, they released the provincial budget last month, so.
Okay.
So that's how we know their new number.
Okay.
But of course, again, they already billed us for the first quarter.
The first quarter, would it, if you calculate it out, really works out to about 5.62?
Yes.
Virtually.
So our next one's gonna be higher.
It'll be higher.
If it's going to 5.9, that's fine. Maybe a half percent increase?
Yeah.
But is it based on per capita at school?
No, for the assessment.
Just the assessment?
Okay, anything else on any other line item? Okay, not somebody wish to move? Paul? Any question on Paul's motion? Hearing none. All in favor? It's carried. Okay, moving on to correspondence. There's the four items there.
This historical one, would it have gone to the Historical Society?
I'm not sure if they did get a copy of it or not.
Next to on that board?
The Resources Board. It's not a town. Or County Board?
Because I was thinking, they really are probably the ones in a position to be able to, to know if there was anyone that they would like to see awarded that. If we could forward that, yeah.
We could forward a copy, we can make a motion to forward a copy to the Historical Society?
Okay.
Lori Lipton?
No.
The Historical Society.
Historical Society.
Not, not.
Or the...
Museum.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, sorry, what is there any?
The, we have, we have the Historical Resource Advisory Committee that we, that Paul sits on.
Right, and that's the ones looking at the...
The Historical Society.
Sites, yeah. But I was thinking in terms of museum and, I thought they would call it the Historical Society.
They are the Historical Society.
Confusion.
Yes. So we'll forward a 1A to the, a 1K to the Historical Society?
Is that your motion, Laura?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any question on that? Lorna's motion? Hearing none. All in favor? It's carried. Okay, moving on to the second one. Any questions on that one? Moving on to the seniors awards, service award.
We did send that out to in advance, so because of the deadline, obviously being today. To make sure that you guys, if you did have somebody that you wanted to nominate, you could put their name forward.
Okay, moving on to the county wellness. I guess really, we don't have to do anything, we don't have to close anything, it's just a...
They use the walking path.
Yeah. Okay, any question on any of those four?
Receive information.
Paul moves for information. Any question on Paul's motion? Hearing none. All in favor? It's carried. Okay, committee. There's the three of them there. Anything on the first one? Paul kind of spoke about this one at the last meeting, but...
Yeah, just catching up.
Yeah. Any question on anything on that one? Okay, moving on to the MPC of the 17th meeting. Okay, moving on to the golf course.
I assume from the those that are present, that's the new board?
Yes, yeah. President is Wayne Scher, Barry Gore is the vice, Tyler is, Wolf is the secretary, and David Lyon is the treasurer.
Okay, did you ever call in?
Just something noted in the House Committee report that Stacy Mueller and Paul, will be, Paul Mansfield will be attending a town meeting to investigate options for reducing water costs, which have been explored before. So just a heads up, they're going to come. And so that everybody has the same information, we bill the golf course exactly what the Water Commission bills us for the water. So it's a 28 cents a cubic meter. Sorry, 28, 28 cents a cubic meter. So just a heads up, when they do, or if one of them discusses it with you. Paul's been talking to him a little bit about it, so that you know.
Yeah, that immediate theory is taken.
Okay, anything else on that? Okay, well, we'll go around the table. You want to start, Paul, or?
What do I have? Water Commission? Golf course, I already see you got. Water Commission, we approved the audit. That was about it. And then, I'm sure everybody else who updated the emergency management.
There you go. Okay, any questions? Paul? George Lee?
I was at the Emergency Management and the Water Commission. Yeah, it was just the audit. And he said our water's, the cleanest, it's been a long time we're not using this lot of chemical. Actually, the returns of chemical, because we're not using it. He say our water is really, really clean right now.
Wow.
Yeah. It was nice.
Okay, any questions for George Lee?
This would be for Paul and George Lee. Did you go to the communication meeting too?
Yes, we did.
I missed you there.
Hmm?
I missed you there.
I bet you did.
I'm sure you did.
Yeah, Tom got some really nice awards. Should have brought your plaque, and I showed it to everybody.
Yeah, because somebody only won the Tazman's, you know. It's really, really nice.
It's really nice.
Okay, anything else?
No.
I was just curious. Probably a lot.
Paul?
I was at the communications meeting, the emergency services meeting, and also MPC, I forgot to say, PC Paul. You're great. I had to leave something for you.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. And MPC is pretty much... The minutes are there if you have any questions. Okay, any questions for Sean? Hearing none, we'll move on to Laura.
I had the emergency management course, the communication meeting, and then I had the library. They're still waiting for the doors. They're gonna get the rentals done when everybody's schedule kind of falls into place, to get everybody in the same place at the same time. There is board training for the library on the 5th of May. So I'm looking at going to that. Because I think the, what they've listed for that training is, I think would be not just beneficial for the library board, but for every board. Because it's management, grant writing, things that could cover everything. And I would have had VBIT, but it was canceled because that was on the 19th, and they had a lot going on at the school that day.
Okay, any questions for Laura? Okay, moving on. Michelle?
I unfortunately was not able to make the emergency training, but did the county communication session, as well as a victim services meeting, which mostly dealt with kind of getting all of our ducks in the row for the program for hearing financial position. Getting that kind of worked out, as well as going over financial statements, as well as all the Soultime grants that those were through general, which is where most of our funding comes from. China Casino, as well as getting ready for the AGM for victim services next month. Also, on the 24th, I, 21st, it's not the future yet. I had community futures board training. And it worked out really well, because the two modules that we were doing that day were lending and leadership. And it just so happened to be that our member large had put his resignation that week. So there was members of the IRC there. And I was able to actually take and, you know, go through, hammer out a lot of questions in terms of asking them, like, as an IRC member, what is it that you look for? What is it that is a good fit for that position? What questions would you recommend asking? And what answers would you typically, you know, look for? And I had just asked, because it made sense to me, about inquiring if the chair of the board, the auctioneered, possibly having them sit in on the interview. Just because, I mean, they obviously are very familiar dynamic as to, you know, where the board's heavy, where there's any kind of gaps that could be filled, and what characteristics that can work to kind of stable result. So that was actually really, really fantastic, and the timing worked out really great.
Okay, any questions for Michelle?
Thank you. The AGM for the victim services, is that open to the public?
Let me check.
It should be.
Sorry, I was like, most of them usually ours, so. Okay, I'll double check, but yeah.
Okay, thanks, Michelle. I'm pretty sure.
Okay, any other questions? Laura?
I had the emergency management. And I went to the ASHA, the Alberta Seniors Community Housing Association, I mean, it's the last word. Anyhow, I have pages and pages, which I'm sure you don't want me to read to you right now. But it was a lot of interesting comments. I think a lot of people, especially smaller rural areas, are suffering the same thing we are. They have empty spaces, they have, like, what are we going to do? And so they, they were kind of trying to address some of those. So Marcus meets tomorrow night, and we'll see what, what we planned from there on in. But it did come up with some, some good ideas.
Good.
And it snowed like crazy. But I don't think that had anything to do with Congress. And I think that was it. I have Marcus tomorrow night. And it was supposed to be health and wellness on Wednesday, but that's been canceled.
Okay, any questions for Lorna? Hearing none, moving on to Mr. Paul.
So I have a meeting scheduled with EDF for tomorrow. They had to cancel last week due to a meeting that they had in Madison, happened way longer than they anticipated. And they were driving past frantically trying to catch a plane to get back to Toronto. So it's been scheduled for tomorrow. And to look at the final draft of the agreement, so that we can actually bring something back to council to have a look at again. Stu did some assistance with the county. Wanted me to bring it up, that, that, for the flooding, so he went out Saturday and stayed out with their crews until about midnight. We've helped them, just resource-wise, with mostly barricades, things like that, to block off any of their routes. We met with iCompass, and we've got the start on implementing the agenda package stuff. So they're currently sending us templates to see what, how our current, our current style will fit into theirs. So we're working with them on that. And it's most likely going to be, council probably won't see anything until about June. That's what we're looking at, to be implementing that. The, we met on the 12th with the county and ORSC for the IMDP to review. Went through the preliminary draft of that. We're now going back to, of course, the county and the town separately to answer a bunch of questions on our own. And then we're just gonna put them together to see how they mesh, and then put us back in the group together to see if we have to hash anything out on that. So that process seems to be going fairly well with that. Of course, worked on some bylaws and policy things the last couple of weeks with the dates closing for the MGA requirements for some of these to be passed. So I worked on those, and we've pretty much got the budget finalized with all the changes that council's talked about over the, since November, since you had your first look at it. So what we're doing is we're hoping to bring it back in the next, to the next council meeting. But wanted to know if council felt that you'd like to have a committee of the whole meeting before, to really just do the budget, or you want to put it as just part of the regular council meeting? Really, you know, most of the changes that were put in place, so you've seen it several times, we'll put it out to you when we get bats like we always do, so you can have a look at it. If you have any questions, bring it forward. So I guess, if, the question is, is if you would like to do it in a, in a committee of the whole meeting, or just at the regular council meeting?
The, there's not gonna be a ton of changes, so really, probably it's not gonna take much time on it, just a regular council meeting.
Could we do it just before our council meeting?
Well, we could, but I mean, I don't think it's gonna be...
You think it's that long?
No, it's, I think all it is is just, you know, to administration to explain, and if they send it out early enough, you go through it. If you have any questions to ask, you can ask. You know, we're not anticipating any, any changes in what the mill rate was gonna be proposed. So it should be fairly tight.
You've done it both ways before. You've had it just at a regular council meeting, and you've had, council's had a committee of the whole to go through it as well. So like I said, we haven't, all the changes that we've made since November are the things that you've asked for to be changed. And then, of course, got the assessment. And we'll make a suggestion for adjusting the tax rate to meet the assessment. So, and the missing, not to ruin it for you all, but the assessment didn't change very much. So the double rate most likely will not change much, unless you want to add all that stuff to the budget. So I don't want to, don't want to ruin the excitement of the read for you, but there's not much of a change.
Probably suggested a regular council meeting.
Okay, what's the feeling? You're doing it?
I think it's not a change.
Okay, sure, regular council meeting. Anything else?
And that's all I have, I think.
Any questions for Kim? Hearing none, we'll move on. I, same thing, I went to the communication meeting and also the emergency management meeting. Something that came from the emergency management meeting was the discussion about ICS 100 and 200, 300, and 400. I don't recommend anybody taking the 400 unless you're really, really interested in getting involved in that side of it. But 100, 200, did you, do you have your 100?
100, 100.
But do you have one? Have your 100? I think so.
Yeah.
You know, and I was gonna...
Laura's going.
Did you guys, did you guys ever take 200?
Yeah.
No.
Okay. Like, the 100 can be taught, it's, it's a self-taught course. But the advantage of bringing somebody in to help us through it is quite nice. I, I think that it'd be great to see all our staff, you know, be offered the 100. Now, I appreciate, you know, trying to offer it to staff at a time when it's not a real big course. But it can be done in an evening easy, and then it's a long line thing too. The 200 and 300 have to be taught by an instructor. The 200 is a day-long course. The 300 is a two-and-a-half-day-long course. And the 400 is supposed to be a five-day course. But, but anyway, I would like to see everybody at least get the 100. So I think that, you know, maybe we should contemplate it, and see if Kim can arrange it, and see if maybe some of the staff would like to take it at the same time, and...
We can do something very similar to what we did last time, where we brought Bill Seymour in. I believe for the returning counselors, you guys have them all. Bill Seymour came here and talked 100, and it took four hours, two, three hours, or something like that. So it's not a very invasive...
And then, you know, same thing, we could, you know, see if we could, if some of the staff would like to take it. I don't know, I'm sure Stu probably has at least his 100 anyway. But, but, you know, again, like I said, I, I think we should at least have a 100 or 200, and see what, go from there. That'll be, you know, there was also a comment about our, our emergencies plan. And it's available for anybody that wants to see it. And then there was a discussion on, on, you know, doing a joint plan. And it's, it's in the process of, you know, being discussed amongst. But, so... Yeah, the communication meeting, we didn't, you know, not an awful lot came from it, but there was a little bit of discussion about the housing. There was a couple of comments about after, about, you know, other facilities that, you know, have been, what they thought potentially has advantages of, you know, multi-level tiers of housing involved in one facility. I was supposed to have a solid waste meeting on Wednesday night, but it's been canceled. SEWA has their, their meeting on Friday in Lethbridge, or in the Coldale. And they're going to pick a date. As a matter of fact, they do have a date, and a time saved for in May in Champion for the AGM. But we'll be releasing that soon. They met with the minister on Friday, or the assistant to the premier, I should say, on Friday. So hopefully, there'll be something positive come out of that. Other than that, it's pretty well it. Any questions for me?
You mentioned the emergency plans being available where, like on the town seat?
No, Kim's got it.
Oh, I've got them in binders. They're, they're fairly healthy documents. They're in binders in my office.
Okay. And then, then, like I said, there, there's still, you know, a discussion going about, about having a joint one that's throughout the whole county. And that's what you made a comment about, you know, that they have been working on that with some of the villages, like Champion, Carvaglia, and the county have all worked on theirs together.
And to be completely honest, the town about four years ago, three years ago, I guess, oh, it's four, took the lead on that. That was part of our partnership with the county for that employee, for that safety and emergency management, was to work towards that. And of course, the county has made some changes, and don't no longer have that employee. At that time, the town had the only up-to-date emergency management plan, and we basically offered it to everybody as a template. And so now, everybody's got their plans in place, and now they're looking at more of a regional approach. And of course, just waiting for the information on how they would like to do that back. Because our first attempt at that didn't, didn't pan out the way that we had originally anticipated.
Was this meeting in Loma?
Pardon?
That meeting in Loma at that time, was, it was a bit about emergency management?
Yeah, that was, Bill Seymour gave an update on, on what every regional emergency management would look like.
Okay. But that wasn't what you were talking about?
No, that was a communication meeting that came up at, on Loma, I think.
Okay, but he was there?
He was there, as a spokesperson or as a...
Speaker or something?
Yeah, speaker.
You know, the one day in Loma, it was almost a walkthrough of how it works. How do you, how do you set up a center, an EOC?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because we had to do role-playing though, I remember it well.
And one of the things that did strike me with the emergency management meeting is talking about all these various roles. We don't have enough people. So it comes back to councilors.
Yeah, and again, you know, but yet, if you listen to what Corset, that councilors, where our role is. Outside that door. The doorway, and, and so, you know, I, I think that, you know, that's where the plan potentially has its merits. Obviously, we're trying to bring it together, and, but, anyway, yeah. So if you want to get a chance to read a copy of it, or read the copy, then we go over there.
Thank you.
I believe I do have digital that I can, that I can put together for you.
That would be awesome, thank you. Is it too big to email?
It's a very good...
It's a healthy one.
Yeah. Like, it's a...
I actually have it on CD, or...
Probably two each, I find it.
Okay.
Someone's...
I can, I, I think I can put it on one of our, our pen drives, pen drive drives.
Yeah.
For it.
Thank you.
Keep that.
Okay, so anything else? Okay, I need somebody to move that. I'll take Laura's.
I, I should sit down here, because I can't see when people put their hands in.
Any question on Laura's motion to file for correspondence? Hearing none. All in favor? It's carried. Okay, moving on to our first bylaw for the evening. This is council code of conduct.
If you do, you want to do three readings. We don't, we didn't put motions in.
Oh, okay. So hopefully, everybody had an opportunity to read through the...
I have a question. Kim too?
Okay.
I'm not quite sure I understand it. Members are, and I don't have my glasses on, so, members are to be free from undue influence and not act or appear to act in order to gain financial or other benefits for themselves, family, friends, or associates, business or otherwise. I didn't know it extended to friends and associates.
That was the wording that the AUMA came up with, so I just, the copy that, so there's room for amendment there.
No, I don't care to amend it, I just, that kind of caught me by surprise. Because I thought we'd always been taught this immediate family.
Yes.
Just on that note, saying immediate family, is that, is this still just immediate family, or is it? Because it was just like your, your siblings and your parents, it wasn't?
The peculiary interest in the MGA defines, and it's...
I think you get the, including grandma and grandma too.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not cousins and uncles, that sort of thing, but it's immediate. And like I said, there is a definition with that. But it's the definition for peculiary interests as well.
This one here...
This one's just conflict of interest. So I kind of, and again, like I said, this is, this bylaw is completely up for council discussion. The wording that I used was the wording... The wording that I used was the wording put forward by the A U M A in their suggestions, so...
I guess friends and associates get to be a little vague as to how far out do you go? Cause you were my friend yesterday, but now you're not going.
Because of what happened, we're not friends anymore.
But on the other hand, like a, a conflict of interest, I think is, is going to be different than peculiary interest because in the MGA it only allows us to exclude ourselves for, you know, certain gains and so...
Yeah, but I just was wondering, to me it just seemed like it kind of extends an awful long way for, to actually know where you draw the line.
Now, for the basis of this bylaw...
It probably never matters.
It, it, again, conflict of interest, those sort of things, what would happen to have, have to happen with this bylaw is somebody has to make a complaint and they have to make it, the complaint to you as council. And you guys discuss whether a conflict of interest is legitimate or not and whether you investigate it further. And again, the penalty or the, the sanctions that are put against you for something. And you can see from the sanctions why, for breaking anything on the code of conduct are very straightforward from asking for an apology, publicizing an apology all the way through to training. But you as counselors can't dismiss another counselor that's been duly elected, any of those things, so...
Is this sort of what happened in Port MacLeod?
Uh, well, they, they went to court on that one.
Oh, okay.
I'm glad...
So it was even more...
I'm glad the like part of that, that word associates. How many people does each one of us know in this community?
Everybody.
Everybody that voted for you.
Just let everybody know. So they're all associates.
That's right.
So it almost strikes that word?
Absolutely. Now, take my... Okay, just for formality sake, you do have to give a first reading first and then you can make amendments. Then you can do your second, third.
We've still got a few days, right? Until July?
Oh, for, for passing this, oh, you have, you have plenty of time, that's why I borrowed it up. You can give it first reading tonight, suggest amendments and bring it back. Absolutely, this is the, this is why I talked to you about it last meeting, this is the first kick of the can at this. This is your code of conduct, so... I, I used an available template and took out all of the city things.
Fine, I was thinking, so you can see.
So, so on 10.2.
But then if you say associates and then it says business or otherwise, do we take up the business or otherwise also?
Next reading.
Well, no, but yeah.
No, you can, you can amend it right now and do all the readings or you can do, technically you have to do first reading regardless. This is how it's presented, so...
But I mean, again, you know, in discussion on that, you could alter that 10.2 quite a bit if you want. Like you could just end it up benefit for themselves, period, you know? Or themselves and family, period. And leave off friends and associates or end it, friends and associates and leave off business or otherwise.
It's your code of conduct.
Yeah.
Why don't we give the first reading?
Okay. So some wish...
I'll move that.
Paul moves first. Any question on Paul's motion? Hearing none, all on paper. It's carried. Okay, so now do we want to make an amendment?
Good, for discussion.
Yes, we can either amend it, approve it, give it a second reading or whatever you want.
Personally, I'd like to see it amended.
Okay. Laura moves that we amend 10.2?
Yep.
To read.
To go for themselves and family, period. So friends or associates, business or otherwise would be deleted?
So benefits for themselves or for them.
Okay. Any thoughts, questions? Paul?
If we take out for... I understand where you're coming from, but if it's in a, if I'm in business, say with Steven. And...
He's going, he's having another reaction.
Yeah. And...
I can put the camera on him if you want.
I think you should. But if, you know, I'm, I'm in, I'm in a business, he's my business partner. And there's a ruling done that, you know, I guess that would benefit me and, um...
It's, it's a... Peculiary interest and code of, conflicts of interest are very hard to define because you want to leave them open enough to allow you to do things, but you want them tight enough that you don't do the wrong things, right? So that's why it's really hard to put...
I, I get where you're coming from on that, I just, I can see scenarios where maybe it could be deemed as, it could be a conflict of interest.
What if you said family and business associates?
No, but, but, but as long, but as long as it says for themselves. If he's in business with somebody, it's going to affect him thems, themselves.
That's true.
One that might not would be is, is a friend. So you've got a friend that's got a business. Now, he has no financial gain for you at all, but yet you would like to see that person gain financially. And so potentially you could say there could be a conflict of interest. But again, like Kim has said, and then I think that's where the MGA has issues is that, you know, after a while, we couldn't do anything, you know? Because all of our friends live in our community and all of our friends and, you know, so I mean theoretically, you know, you'd have to find people that didn't know anything about the community and never lived in the community to, to make it too tight. So I, I, I think my alternative bit should cover us. That doesn't mean that we can't change it again if we run into some difficulties, but this at least gives us that stab in the dark.
The thing to keep in mind with this as well is it's, uh, this bylaw is open to the public. This is the whole point is the transparency, that sort of thing, and it's people's interpretation of it. So no matter what you put there, they're going to interpret, if somebody is mad at you for something you did, they will interpret this bylaw to bring forward a complaint. No matter what is written in, in this, by putting the definitions, these, it's just going to help you guys investigate whether it's legitimate or not. Uh, you will never protect against the perception of other people on certain items. Because there's been business, you know, years ago and, you know, a hundred years ago, councils were all accused of doing nothing but things were good for business because all the people that sat on council were just businessmen. You know, the, things have changed, the perceptions change. You will never, never clearly define everything for every person in town.
And even under number 10.4 where, you know, it's up to each member to seek independent legal advice. Again, on that, you know, your legal advice, even though it's unbiased advice that you're getting, even though you're paying them to give you advice, it, it kind of leaves you to that position where you, you can go to three lawyers and get three different opinions of advice on, on the same thing too. So I, I think that if, by changing it a little bit, doesn't really change the intent of what the philosophy of the conflict of interest, but yet it allows it so that, you know, somebody that has a grudge against somebody that they can't go after and say, well, you got a friend that benefited from it or, you know, otherwise, you know, got a benefit there. So now all of a sudden you have a high legal counsel to protect you because it wasn't otherwise. You know, I think that otherwise or business or associates or families or friends should be, you know, especially friends, I should say, families.
Yeah, I think this to me sounds more city than small town. To me, small town, like you said, you know everyone, whether they're an actual friend or just an associate, pretty much. I don't know, that's how I see it.
It's, it's up to you. I mean, do you, you know, do you want to just give it the first reading tonight? Lorna's made a motion to amend it and we can either approve that motion or make an amendment to that motion or, you know, defeat that motion. And then we can bring it back as a second reading next meeting or as long as we have one in place by July, it's main goal.
So Lorna has a motion on the floor?
Right.
To amend 10.2 to add or between family and friends and remove associates, business or other. Otherwise, sorry. Ran out of paper.
Okay.
So that motion's on the floor for your discussion, Karen.
So any other thoughts?
I like the idea of associates being removed because from where I, like from my job, half the town could be considered an associate if I talk to them regularly at the store and I talk to everybody regularly at the store.
At the same time though, I kind of can definitely see it with less perspective in terms of maybe there's some other wording where it can include like direct business. I don't, you know, but to kind of encompass that because that was a really good point. At the same time, exactly, we're in a town, 2,000 people, we associate with everybody.
I, now, I think I'm okay with the way Lorna did it because it's, I don't know if there's any, there's any magic words that'll cover everything.
Well, even to say friends, friends is a pretty broad term.
When I was 19, I was friends with everybody in town. Now I have, now I have five.
But the thing is too, is I can consider somebody from the store an associate and they can consider themselves my friend, right? So you have to consider how that could go both ways.
And the public's perception of that. People can see two people riding in a vehicle together and take it for granted with their friends. So that's what I'm getting at with the perception of this. Your, the reason for passing this bylaw is to be open and transparent, so however you do that.
Okay, any further discussion on Lorna's motion? Hearing none, all in favor of Lorna's motion?
Lorna?
She's in favor of Lorna.
Opposed. Nobody opposed, so it's carried. So now we have a choice whether we can bring it back, whether to correct it or we can approve it with, give a second reading tonight as amended?
I would hate to bring it back.
Okay, well, if one person wants to bring it back, we'll bring it back.
Absolutely.
So if we don't have anything with it, we're already giving a first reading.
First reading and a motion to amend, that's just fine.
Okay, well, the administration will correct it and bring, or should we say correct it?
Bring it back for second of their reading.
Alter it and bring it back for second of the reading. Okay, moving on then to the policy A 15, public participation.
Another note for you, I did, I, I did attach the acts to both of them so that you would know, or the regulations of both of them so that you know what bullet points of the bylaws and policies, making sure that you know that we covered everything that's in the, in the regulations.
Okay, so any questions on public participation policy?
One of the noteworthy things is that, of course, I used a template from another municipality as a guide for this and one of the big major changes that I made is the town shall organize at least one public participation activity annually in order to present budget as well as to obtain the council, uh, community's overall perceptions, quality of life and satisfaction with the programs and services. You've been doing that for the last several years already and the municipality that I was using as, as template, they don't do anything like that. So I wanted to make sure that we addressed what we're already doing. And every year, and one of the reasons to add it to the policy is every year after we have that meeting and five people show up, council has a discussion on whether it's worthwhile keeping it. So with you adding it to the policy, again, here, this will, this policy according to the MGA will be reviewed every time you have an organization meeting, so...
See, the, I can give you guys kind of a bit of hint to what we've tried in the past, years and years ago. Years ago, they had two public hearings meetings a year and then we kind of cut it back to one. We've had an open session at council meetings, which is an opportunity for the public to, you know, put their... The problem with that one was open sessions that we had are open floor to the public is that quite often the administration and us don't get an opportunity to have any background on what the questions are going to ask. And so sometimes it just becomes a little bit of a witch hunt for sometimes. And then sometimes, you know, we just, you know, because we couldn't, you can't debate the issue, you can't, all you can do is hear the issue. And you can't even answer the issue. You have a period of time that you give an opportunity to, you know, answer the question that was asked or the comments that were made. So there's no debating, no discussion, no that goes on. The other thing that we did try years ago too was on a Saturday, once a month, had a coffee meeting, you know, invite the public into council meetings and two of the counselors would come and sit and sit around and, and it started off fairly good to start off with and then it ended up to being that the two counselors sat and visited with each other for the two hours in the morning and on Saturday morning. And, and the reason why they picked a Saturday was just a day that, you know, hopefully the public would have an... So that was kind of removed. So then, again, we went back to just once a year. And then depending on the time of year, some counselors, councils brought it closer to budget. Some councils, you know, brought it in, you know, let's do it right now before your assessment comes out and your taxation comes out because as soon as you get that out, then people are going to be upset and, you know, council people are going to come and, you know, voice their views, you know, in a non-popular method. Previous councils chose to pick that route, go right after the, the taxes came out. So everybody had an opportunity to read their taxes and say, oh, I've got a concern about A, B, C, or D. And then we always tried to add something to it. So like last year, we brought in a local improvement one and, you know, this year we...
You know, last year was the business and...
Oh, yeah, that's right, the year before it was the local improvement. So, you know, to explain the local improvement, how it was going to affect and why it was going to affect, you know? And so, you know, this year we'll, we're, had a couple items on our agenda to add to the, so this year. So again, you know, it was to try and say, you know, we're not trying to hide anything. We're going to wait until the taxes come out so people have an opportunity to say, I have a concern about line A or B or C and we can explain it at that meeting.
One of the things we talked about was this public participation, letting everybody know how they can engage council. Because we have a lot of people that come to the counter, ask when the council meetings are, say they're going to come. You see them. We don't get very many visitors.
And then also too, you know, in previous history, we only used one form of advertising. Now we advertise at council meetings on the door, which never used to be done, it was just done by the press. Now we advertise it on the door, we advertise it in our, on our website and, you know, go from there, so... So, you know, councils of the days have changed their process and this is another one that now they wanted in writing how we're going to do it and make sure that we do do it. We, we record it on V T V on, on, you know, and publish it, our council meetings. We don't need to do that, but it is another avenue to show, allow the public to have participation in by at least viewing what we're talking about. And then they have the ability to come and via delegation. Show.
Sorry, um, just in terms of talking about what's been previously done and especially with this past winter and all the feedback that even since kind of before Christmas, what about the idea, I mean, I don't think that, I think if something was done monthly, that's overkill and we're just too small a community, but what about, and maybe just the once a year might be a little bit not quite enough? So the idea of, like you said, the two counselors on a Saturday morning, but have it like maybe quarterly and, but actually put it out on social media and have it, you know, promoted so people have access. Cause there seems like there's quite a few people in the community that have opinions about, you know, what we do or feedback that they could be giving us. And they do share that on social media and maybe be a little bit less intimidating as well instead of having to come down and sit through an entire meeting or, you know what I mean, going to an environment they're not really sure of as opposed to just going down to the coffee shop and sitting down and say, hey, you know, these are my concerns. And it's not, like I said, I, it's not frequent enough that it's a waste of time, but hopefully frequent enough that the community also... frequent enough that it's a waste of time, but hopefully frequent enough that the community also feels like they're being heard and listened to and that, you know, we truly do care for the feedback they're giving us.
And I don't know how many, you got a point there to agree, but I don't know how many people get much feedback on their, on their emails. I mean, we publish our emails on our website of every councillor. So I don't know how many of you get many emails from the general public. So again, I, you know, if that's what council wishes to do, that's, that's, that's great, you know.
The idea of this policy is this is what we're doing right now, so if we have ideas to add to it, absolutely.
Yeah, definitely.
This is the bare minimum of what you'll do if you want to do more than that, that's.
Yeah, you know, and again, you know, like there are, are groups that believe in Twitter and, and, you know, Facebooks and, and some of those ones that are out there. If you wish to have that added as a direction, you know, we can take a look at it. My opinion on it is not as probably as popular as, as others, but, you know, it might be. I don't believe in the, the social media, that's generally the ones that we've, I've seen that are heard of and read on social media, I don't think the majority of them will ever come out to a public meeting. You know, or, you know, whether it's public where it's an opportunity to invite them to say, hey, come, come for a cup of coffee. I don't think the majority of them would take that time to do it. I don't think, but I could be wrong.
Well, I find most of the people that have complaints, this is a small enough town, they know how to get a hold of you. They will complain.
And, and again, but, you know, it's, if that's what council wishes to do is to add, add to it or, you know, try it, you know, now's an opportunity to add it to the policy if you think that's what direction you would like to go. I know that the county has started to do some Twittering and some social media on Facebook as well as their.
Not engagement wise, they don't engage, they just put their statements out.
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay.
They don't engage, but.
Yeah, and that's, that's another one because it's easy to, I think, on some of the social media to get involved in the engagement side when it's not always the sober thought of issues.
Should, speaking to that. I don't really see it here, but should there be a policy for councillors in there in regards to social media, like when you're sitting in your position?
Well, it is covered a little bit in here.
Yeah, and they're, in, in doing the research on there, a lot of communities are starting to, this is, this is a requirement. Public participation is a requirement for the MGA. A lot of communities are engaging in social media policies for their council and staff. A lot of them are based on incidents that have happened in their communities about, you know, that. You know, you get pulled into a conversation that gets out of hand and you're already in it.
So the town would have to, there's a bit here, but would the town have to set its own rules?
Yes.
I guess it's better to be, do something beforehand.
You should, you should do a social media policy as a side from your.
As opposed to see.
From your public participation.
Yeah, like as a, you know, as a, as a, to sit on a one-on-one in a room with somebody and have a discussion over a cup of coffee is far different than involved than when you type it out and put it out there for the world to see for the rest of the entire eternity. And I think that's what Kim is talking about is that where, you know, the county's using Twitter as a, we have the educational side of it or the information, but they don't get involved in the other side of it. So if somebody has an issue with it, they don't get in there and say, you know. Whereas, you know, we, we know some politicians that do get involved in the back and forth and.
And that was something that was brought up at the AUMA conference for those that attended those who were being very careful on, on, from a municipal level, how you engage. The social media is to provide information, not necessarily to engage in debate. That's what this room is for, is debate. That atmosphere is for education and promotion, so.
I know a lot of communities, it's one person in the municipality who uses social media.
The bigger, the bigger centers, everything has to be approved by one person as well. And I don't think that we're to that point because we don't, you know, council's been very good at keeping your personal lives and your, and your council separate, so.
If I go on Facebook and say something as Paul Thader councillor. Now that reflects right back in the community, not me.
Yeah, and you addressed part of that, how you speak for council in your code of conduct. You as an individual do not speak for council.
Yeah, to me, having that already in our code of conduct, I mean, that just signed it, or for me, it is common sense that it carries over, you know what I mean? And it's in any relation, whether it's a person or social media, whatever. But I know that, like the county, same thing, all they do is a very simple, you know, emergency updates or, you know.
Information.
Yeah, and that's it, there's no, like, it doesn't go above and beyond, there's, it's not too involved. It's not somebody sitting there and actually spending a whole lot of time. It's just for the awareness because it's a very easy platform to get the word out in terms of, you know, if with feedback, it's far easier than, you know, previous and having to put it out on the paper kind of thing and hope.
In terms of a Saturday coffee, I have no problems with it.
It's something, you know, a person could try, that, you know, if you want to try it again.
And being aside from the policy and something that you should bring up for discussion as something that you want to, like, put together an idea presented and, and we, if you want to have to bring, I can, I can put that on the next agenda or if you, if council wants to get together and put a plan together and something that you can debate at the next council meeting, we can, we can definitely have that. This, again, this policy is just the bare minimum for, this is what you will do for public participation. And like I said, if you want to do things over and above, we can definitely bring that to. I, I can get that on the agenda for the next meeting for sure, discussion.
Yeah, if there's a, if there's a, an appetite to have that added, definitely you can. Like Kim says, unless there's other concerns or questions on this policy, like Kim says, it's the minimum you can add to it or do more.
If you do more, does it have to be part of a policy?
Yeah, no, if council wishes to direct, you know.
If you look at the regulations, they straight, just say municipality, public precision policy must identify how you'll engage stakeholders, basically, and the categories and circumstances for how you'll do that. So you've done a policy that does, yes, if municipal affairs comes in here and says, do you have your once-a-year meeting? Yes, we do. You do everything else on this list? Yes, we do. Hey, and we do this, that would be over and above your policy. Well, choose that. And if you do it successfully for three or four years and you want the next council to continue with it, then you add it to the policy and it becomes part of the day-to-day.
Okay.
With, with that we adopt this public public, or policy for public participation as presented.
Okay, so Lorna moves the policy as presented. Any questions, some of Lorna's questions? Hearing them all in favor. It's carried, but again, if Michelle, if you feel that you'd like to try a couple of different things or whatever, you know, sit down with Kim and we can add it to the agenda for next meeting. And then there could be a little bit of legwork.
I'm going to make you do some work.
I think I'm good at that.
You're okay with that, good.
Okay, so moving on to new business, the credit card limit.
Fairly easy explanation with doing two departments, the original intent of the credit card was for the recreation and with doing tourism as well, booking the Comic Cons, things like that. They will not accept anything but a credit card. So with, with those, Bonnie's finding that we're asking Janice to make sure that it's paid more often than, than just waiting through the regular check runs. So asking council if they consider increasing the credit on that card.
I'm surprised it took this long.
No.
I'll move it.
Okay. Any questions on Paul's motion? Hearing them all in favor. It's carried, thank you. Okay, twelve, eleven-two, I should say, pop up, have your proposal from the grateful cap.
I guess my question is, why did it come from MPC's town, its council?
Because it was a development thing and so they went to MPC through, through Nancy first and because it's not anything that's in our land use by law, it has to be approved by council. So the MPC went through it, thought that it should come to council for.
I was looking at the one parking stall today. It's not a very big spot. Personally, I think it would have to be two parking stalls.
Well, but on the other hand, you know, depending on how you do it, one parking stall is ten feet wide approximately. Most people's deck is not ten feet wide, you can get a picnic table on your deck and you license that space. You think about it, there's only ten spaces between island, island, you know, if nobody, so it's, you're taking up one tenth. If you take up two, now you're, you know, twenty-five, twenty percent of that, the parking is lost. If a couple of other businesses take up the same philosophy and say, we'd like to do that too, all of a sudden the business, there's a parking spot for two cars on that one block.
I thought she was asking for two parking stalls in her letter.
She was, and then she went down to one. So if you see this map that she drew here, she was down to one stall. But of course, also in her map, she drew it as nineteen feet because then a stall is only ten feet, so.
Well, is it a regular stall or the handicap? Because I think that would definitely be a whole other issue if they can't touch those, right?
Yeah, or.
There isn't one there.
There's one there. But the other, or the handicap, the one that we have, other one on Main Street goes out onto an island, so. So there's a picture of it right there. There used to be a handicap, you want to put the arrow where the old.
Okay, it's probably easier to point out.
Sure.
It doesn't, the arrow doesn't come show up on a PDF, so.
Oh, okay, sorry.
This stall here used to be a handicap stall from here.
And that was one of the ones that was, was a question, should they, you know, maybe move around the corner, but that's not what she's asking for.
We did talk about that.
She's asking for this stall right here.
Okay.
And picture she drew is nineteen feet, so it is almost two stalls, but she did request only one when she did talk to Nancy, so.
Oh, and I figured, there's only eight, eight stalls there. I thought there was ten. There's only eight, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
But is the car up to the, the last wake are up to the island?
There's the island there, so one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Eight, eight spots.
Now, we did talk about the former handicap parking spot, but now they're having to come out. It was a very.
Around the corner.
Around the corner.
Well, then, and you're not even going around the corner too, you're, you're going around an empty lot, well, which is the park. So I mean, you're going another twenty-five feet to.
I've had several dealings with business owners down there and there's been, there was issues with parking. With the Cooley, neighboring businesses were complaining that they were taking up their parking stalls. There's an owner down the street from here, just to the south, that a couple of buildings down is very upset if anyone takes that parking spot. And it's, yeah, if you do it for one person, then other people decide. I guess the question is if you buy something in a certain area because it was the right price for you at that time, but you want more, should you have paid more and bought in a different area that had everything that you wanted? So at the, at the MPC meeting, I was the one that put it against this because I think it's a great idea having an outdoor patio, but just with the feedback I've had from, from other business owners and constituents that that's probably not the best place to have it.
And if you look at, say, Vaux, they probably have on each street six or eight of them. Like, there was limited parking, people just walk, I mean.
Yeah, but we're not that, you got to remember.
Maybe we should be.
And we never will be that. And, you know, and you take a look at High River as another example, what it did to their business section by increasing their sidewalk and, and putting the, the push-ups and the concerns and questions of, of lack of parking. You know, I appreciate the letters that came from the two businesses that, the one across the street and one that, you know, adjacent to the round, that believes that it would be neat to try and, you know, we should do the best. I, I think that's true. I think we should try and promote as much as we can businesses to do something out of the, of the, outside the box. But again, you know, it, we are going to lose parking and parking in our community in most people's opinion, that want to run into a store for five minutes is a premium.
I guess the other thing when Lyle was talking about, if you're in, say, I'm going to just pick, say, the bakery and those are stalls for them, I don't think on that street, any of those stalls belong specifically to any building, do they?
No, in, in anywhere in town, like even in front of your house, anybody can park there, that's, it's public.
For seventy-two hours.
For period.
You can publicly park for seventy-two hours anywhere.
This is going to take that one parking spot out of service from May till September, October, whatever we give them permission for. And, you know, there is, in, in the maintenance department have two concerns, major concerns. One is the amount of wash that comes around that corner and down that street. Number two is when they go do street cleaning, you know, who's responsible for that street cleaning underneath and around that item when it's time to clean the streets?
The major drainage good off of Second Avenue goes through the middle of that island and to help the parking stall. So the majority of the flow comes off of, everything on Second Avenue comes across to this side of the road to here and then from a pipe to here, here. So this corner, this stall, when it rains, fills right up with water. That was, that's the concern that Stu wanted to bring up when he mentioned the drainage. The other, the other thing that was brought up for discussion was parking on Main Street from the business owners is limiting it because every few years it gets brought back to council about employees of different businesses parking in front of other businesses and they want town council to write them letters telling them that they can't park there anymore. So it does come up, limited parking, because I think the last one was one bank was parking in front of the other bank, their south, you know, so.
And, and again, you know, I, I think that it's really nice to see that, you know, they're really interested in trying to do something different. I think it's super, you know, the Cooley did a little bit of it at one time. Council gave permission to, you know, put a.
Lighting on the tree.
Lighting on the tree and, and, you know, periodically put a umbrella, you know, a couple of tables out front and the, on the island, because the island was fortunate, it was in front of their business. So, you know, we have tried different things to, but we have never had this approach. The other concern that somebody said to me is what about at night, the vandalism issue on that item? And, and how they're going to barricade it off so that that doesn't disappear at night or, or during a period of time, you know.
That's their concern, right?
It is, but it is our concern too because, you know, no matter what, we, we need to explain to them what's expected, you know, to make a, a type of a barricade system that is not movable because we know that there are times when you put something out there that, you know, it doesn't usually stay there permanently for any length of time unless it's tied down, so.
Hurricane Fisher would tell you that.
So, I mean, those are concerns, you know, sightlines are always concerns, but, you know, it's not taking up any more sightline than. So, I mean, those are concerns, you know, sightlines are always concerns, but you know, it's not taking up any more sightline than the vehicles sitting there, so.
One of the other things that Nancy added to her report were other locations that had been considered are the bubble. And of course, that one has visibility issues because of course she raised, so raised them up another foot and put them on the corner closer to the visibility, but there, and then the parking stall on Second Avenue, which again is in the road, and Lyle already addressed that some of the, the business owners in there already have. But it, it is a very big island, like if you're looking at the one parking stall that she's looking at, it is a very big island. There is a bush and a bench that are in there, but...
In terms of parking stall, I mean, how or what, or is it a dress hall during like Spock Days or the Show and Chines or like events where they actually close it down? What would they, would they keep it up? Would they just take it off for the weekend? Like, how would that?
No, I would assume that, I mean, I, I think if you, you look at the Chamber of Commerce and Spock Days and Show and Shine have always tried to entice businesses to, to do something when the street is closed to, you know, bring your venue out onto the street and make it more family friendly and, or street friendly, whatever you want to call it. And some businesses have done that and some businesses haven't, haven't done it at all, so I would assume that if you did that, that I, I would, I would assume that, 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 if we give them permission, that that lot, that parking spot will be theirs for the period of time.
The proposal is, if council would like to move forward with this, is that, we didn't put the motion on there, but I, I did prepare a motion that if council approves Grateful Cup's proposal for pop-up on a temporary trial basis and to prepare an agreement based on the conditions identified in the report submitted by the Development Officer, because there's certain conditions that would be, and essentially when we looked into it for the pop-up patios in other places, they're actually leasing it from the municipality. They're leasing that space.
So they say...
Is, is, no, but they, they signed an agreement saying that they will follow the conditions that are set by. And this is why Nancy suggested if you wanted to go forward with it, it'd be done on a very temporary basis to see how it works, that sort of thing.
Yeah, so I mean, there, there is huge advantage just to try it.
So if it's on the bubble, could, could it be one stall and the bubble? Like, is there room for that there? I, everyone didn't look at that today carefully.
Again, how do you section it off, that sort of thing? We, we haven't talked to Janelle about that.
Yeah, and that would be up to, I know they just have little picket fences around most of the ones I've seen, or the cord, you know, like you see in a theater.
Yeah, the, the open restaurants that didn't serve liquor just had a, have a cord around them, if they served liquor, they have to be completely fenced in and, yeah.
And the other thing is, you were talking about health issues too. I know some of the other places, they have to serve everything on disposable.
Disposable.
Because you are not allowed to...
Have your cups and things over there.
Pardon, that's for breakage.
Laura, you have a comment or question?
Well, I'm just thinking, if the parking stall will essentially hold two tables of floor probably, right? Can we not, if it comes down to it, offer them to put two patio tables out on the bubble that would hold, that would each seat four people? So you're not losing that parking stall, but there's got to be room for two tables of floor out by that bench.
Oh, I would think so.
I would think so. Uh, the, the only issue brought up with that is an umbrella have visibility, because you've moved an umbrella that much closer to the corner. So you, as you, we already get quite a few complaints about bushes that are on those corners because, so, I'm not going to point out anybody in this room, but somebody drives a car that's this tall, can't see over that bush. I, I've heard.
But if you're turning right, you didn't, really, the visibility shouldn't be a huge issue.
That's right, that's right.
Well, an advantage of that, one intersection for visibility is, it is a way forward stop, so everybody does have to stop.
If you have four-way stop.
Everyone has stop.
Yeah.
Now, that's, that's not, yeah, that's right, you're supposed to. That, that doesn't neglect us from, or negate us from saying that we, the visibility issue is a concern to some citizens, because it always is.
But could we not put a height stipulation on the umbrella?
But, but again...
Like, so they can't go lower than so far so that the max you're worrying about is like the pole?
Yeah. I, I, again, I, I'm not sure. We can, we can definitely look at all those fa- facets, I, I guess, um, I mean, it, it is, I think it is great to see them looking outside the box and trying to come up with something that's different and, and, and I don't even know if they understand or, you know, know whether it'll be a successful event or not, too.
The other thing with putting tables on the bubble is they'll have to go in every night, so there won't be any concern with vandalism. They'll have to take them inside too, right?
And I would...
Depending on what they are, we, that bench that's out there year-round.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that for the investment of the two tables and the chairs and umbrellas, they'll probably go inside if they're on the bubble. I'm thinking they'd go inside if they were on the patio.
I, I would think that if it's in the bubble or on the street, there'll be more picnic table style of what the picnic table is now.
Yeah, that's what she said, in her, in her...
Yeah.
Well, she already has a table and two chairs up there in front of the store as of right now, which is on the sidewalk.
They go in every night, yeah, they go in every night.
So I think that's partly why the, you know, the concern of if it was a more of a picnic style, table style, that, you know, especially if it was something similar to what, you know, the town owns or Spock Days owns, they are, they're more of a, one that you would not fold up and take down, more not, not a pop-up.
You don't load those in the back of your truck very easily.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's, it's, it's one of those ones, it's, it's nice to see that they're interested and want to try something and, and they're willing to bring it forward, that's for sure.
I would move it and we can just open it, I guess.
Okay, so...
So, would you like me to move it?
I like the lease idea though, that they maybe have to be responsible for keeping that corner tidy.
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, yeah, well, Nancy, and Nancy has brought that all through, all through her report.
All through, through her report.
Uh, it, it has the application, be responsible for maintaining the appearance of the leased lands. And Town of Vulcan shall have the right to go in to do maintenance with twenty-four, so you don't have, if they have things permanently attached to, that we just have to give them twenty-four hours if we have to, again.
And a fourteen-day escape clause.
Yeah, and then fourteen days' notice to terminate the agreement, and again, temporary as a, as a trial basis. Do you want to use the stall or do you want to talk to, have Nancy talk to her about the island?
Well, either or. Actually, I wouldn't mind seeing a stall and the island, but...
Can we put a stipulation on some of this, like, okay, this is for thirty or forty-five days? And then, you know, after that, ask for feedback from, you know, to make, to see if it's actually...
Put, put, put the timeline a lot shorter than the, than the season, but...
Well, it just says that to, you know, on review, right, and maybe bring her in and say, okay, like, this is the feedback that we've heard from the community, like, how are things going here? Like, just to kind of have...
So, so put a timeline on the temporary?
Or even just add the review at that point and see what happens.
A tri- trial basis for X amount of days, uh, to approve it on a, on a trial basis for X amount of days, sixty, ninety, thirty, four, fifty?
Well, I say ninety and we're in September already.
Yeah, but...
Yeah, 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 that's right.
Do we have to limit the time or can we just bring it up for review and see how everybody's liking it after thirty days?
Yeah, but you have, you do have to put a timeline on it for review because her interpretation might be the end of the season or it's going to be thirty days.
Well, no, I'm saying, I'm saying, do we have to limit, like, do we have to say you can only have it for thirty days? Or can we say we're going to be okay with it for the summer, but we want a review in thirty days?
And see, and that's where your approval for the proposed on a temporary thirty-day basis to be reviewed or...
Okay.
You, you can word it that way, like, we can definitely word it that way. I'll read, I'll read Lauren's motion one time.
Well, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to understand if saying it has to be reviewed in thirty days mean we're only okaying it for thirty days to start with. Like, can we say we're, we're good with this for the summer, but we want to do a review in thirty days?
Well, if you review it thirty days and it's negative, it's going to be forty, uh, forty-four, because you've got to get fourteen days' notice.
Fourteen days' notice, yeah.
Well...
So, you know...
But I'm just trying to understand if that limits, I don't know, maybe I'm not getting my...
See, you guys...
No, you are, you are, but...
And again, you guys have all the power here. So if you review it, if you put it, if you do the agreement for forty-five days, you review it and you do aside, it's ongoing. You do an ongoing and then you give us direction to develop a policy so that if other places ask, this is how we do it. If you review it after thirty days or whatever timeline we put on that and you don't like it, you get the fourteen days' notice and it's done.
I have a question. Would have Janelle and him seen this report from Stu about the, about the water and everything in that stall?
I'm not sure, but I know she, she does know about the drainage and, and whatnot, so she's been watching it, so, uh, she, she had that conversation with Nancy.
To me, the suggesting that they make it the same height as the curb and the same height as the, the island, theoretically, if they do it correctly, they eliminate the drainage issue because it goes underneath.
Water would run underneath.
And that's what it does in Vam.
But, um...
Port carries it down to the, down to the next stall.
But the, the other disadvantage to that is the person getting out of the stall next to it. All of a sudden, you pull in with a car that's only this high, and it's white and it's only six inches long.
And you can't open your door.
So when you open, if you do get your door open, then you roll out of it instead of trying to crawl out, you know, type thing, because your seat now is at the same level as the ground, you know, type thing, you know? And I'm not trying to be mean to the little white tank car.
We are little.
But, but there is two advantages to making them, make an island, you know, the same height, because then eliminates the potential for the water issue to become a, and a trip hazard. And there, there's advantages to it, but it's also got the disadvantages that, and it gives them something that they can...
Cost involved, sort of thing.
Yeah, but then it also gives them something to attach the barricade to.
Barricades.
Barricade to, because, and then it has no structure to attach to the ground, but yet, so there's those, there's advantages and disadvantages to both. And so, again, I'm not trying to say, I, I, I really like, personally, I really like to see them give this a whirl. I really like to have seen them try it in previous years, I've just put it out when Spock Days have come around, and I appreciate they haven't owned it for very long. But, you know, Spock Days and Tin Man and, and Show and Shine and...
Start on three weekends and work your way up to every day.
But again, you know, we've had very few businesses that have ever, ever taken that, that direction, and here we've got one that's interested in doing it. And yet we're wanting to make the restrictions too tight or not at all, but anyway, Lauren made the motion.
Thirty-eight, forty-five, eighty, sixty-eight.
So when's it going to start?
It's your motion.
What, when's this going to start, like, right away?
As soon as she puts it up.
Oh, when she puts it up, completely...
No, I, I disagree.
It's a thirty-day trial.
I, I think you have to say, it starts May first, goes to...
Or from today, then you give it forty-five days or sixty days.
You know, you know, again, you say, May first to...
I just think if she's going to do a platform or whatever she's going to do, and I don't know if she can, it seems a lot of work for thirty days. And I, doesn't give you a real understanding of what the traffic's going to be like, because it could rain every day for thirty days and no one sits out there.
That's correct. But then all of a sudden you can say, well, we're going to, going to give you thirty days, you know, but when's it going to start? You gotta give them a start date and say, if that begins your time period, otherwise I could say, oh, it's easy, you know, I'm going to wait around, oh, I think I'll have it December first to December thirty-first.
Sounds good, yeah.
You know, type thing, you know, I...
So ninety days from this council meeting would be approximately the end of July.
How about ninety days from the May long weekend? And that takes us to December.
May one to July thirty-first.
Pardon?
Which is with a possible extension for August and September.
Oh, it's just to be reviewed at that time and then you can decide how you, till, you can, you can just say, uh, May to July.
Just a side note, there has been some talk, I believe, of the umbrellas being paid for by other businesses doing their sponsorship on them,
Sponsorship. Sponsorship, yeah.
Which will help cover the cost for the patio, the tables and so on, so.
And nobody, is somebody going to want a sponsorship on something that might only last thirty days?
Exactly.
Business is a gamble.
Oh, I know, I live, I worked in one, so.
If you do ninety days from March first...
May.
You're, sorry, May first takes you to the thirty-first to July.
Why don't you just do it by months, May, June, July? Now, you have ninety-two days.
So I will read this motion that Lauren made. That council approves the Grateful Cup's proposed pop-up patio on a temporary trial basis from May first, two thousand eighteen, to July thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, and directs administration to prepare an agreement based on the conditions identified in the report submitted by the Development Officer. That will allow you to review it, if you want to keep it, you can go ahead and keep it, we can then start developing policies on how they will be dealt with on a regular basis.
Okay, now, I'm maybe not understanding that first part, so you're saying May first to July thirty-first and then it'll be reviewed?
Mm-hmm, and I can add that. I didn't add it too, but that was the motion that it, to the thirty-first.
I, yeah, I just didn't want them thinking that it only went till July thirty-first, no matter what.
Review prior to July thirty-first. Should be.
So theoretically, that gives them July first, you know, Tin Man, Show and Shine, doesn't give them, uh...
Spock Days.
Spock Days.
Gives them Spock Days, but not Show and Shine, Show and Shine's in. No, it does, it does July, it's in July, yeah.
And Volcon.
Volcon.
Volcon. So theoretically, it gives them the four or five major events to, to try it.
And that was the big thing at the Bazan's convention, was people wanted pedestrian oriented stuff, right? Like the pop-up patios and things outside where they're walking.
Well, for thirty years, I've sat on Spock Days. For thirty years, they've tried to convince businesses to do this. And this is the first time I've heard of businesses has come up and says, I would like to participate.
Well, Spock Days and Volcon are talking about sidewalk sales, and we're in for both, so.
Well, Furniture Village did sidewalk sales for two or three...
But they've never asked for permission to do it.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that, but I did know that for two or three years they had quite a successful...
And they've never, they've never, uh, came out and, and same with Libra, you know, had a book sale on, on a Spock Days weekend, but they never came and said, yeah, we're interested in participating. They just did it.
But not necessarily as part of Spock Days.
Yes, so this is kind of nice to see that somebody's interested in doing something, so your motion would address them. They can sit down with Nancy and, and use the, what her recommendations were.
Okay, so, would you like me to read the motion again?
Please.
The council approved the Grateful Cup's proposed pop-up patio on a temporary trial basis from May first, two thousand eighteen, to July thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, at which time council will review the success of, of this project and administration to prepare an agreement based on the conditions identified in the report submitted by the Development Officer.
Well, okay. Any other comments, questions, concerns?
The town still retains the right to terminate the agreement since fourteen days' notice?
Yes, that's one of the clauses that Nancy put in the, as a condition.
So just as an aside, if, like Lyle mentioned earlier, that if there is a very, spirited response from surrounding businesses, it's not like we can't do anything before the ninety days, like if, I'm just saying, if worst case scenario, and then, okay, so we still have the right to do that if something goes really sideways or if there ends up being a really negative, and hopefully there's not. Like, I think that would be absolutely phenomenal.
If things go there and fifty people show up at your next council meeting and say, that needs to go, then you reconsider.
Okay, okay, sorry, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, any other questions? Carry none, all in favor? Opposed, so it's carried to, pardon? Okay, moving on to encroachment agreement.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Because I was the realtor for this transaction, I think I should be removed myself from this discussion.
Okay.
If you go up this door, there's, oh, there's a bench up there too.
You can sit in my office or go on, Lyle.
Okay, so, uh... Lyle has removed himself for potential conflict of interest, human interest. And so moving on to the application, there's two encro- one encroachment on the deck. There's two.
There's, there's three encroachments, but two of them were to be able to be dealt with by the Development Officer. Anything over point zero seven, or point seven? Point five, sorry, needs to be dealt with, this is... Point five, sorry, needs to be dealt with. This is point seven. Uh, it encroaches it to the utility right-of-way. Know how the utility right-of-way amending agreements go. Uh, we, what we're doing is we're working with FISA law out of Lethbridge to do a standard encroachment agreement for us for this that will be acceptable. So, uh, we don't have the agreement with us right now, but it's the standard encroachment agreement, so we just want to ask council if you'd be willing to accept that. Have us execute a, an encroachment agreement on this property.
And unfortunately, you know, this is another issue that we always run into, especially on pie-shaped lots, um, you know, it looks nice to build this deck and create this lower area and then, then we encroach by, you know, like point, point seven, so it's not a, it's not a huge amount, but it does encroach on the right-of-way. Not onto somebody else's property or onto the town's. Property is on the right-of-way.
This utility right-of-way on the back of the property is for stormwater drainage and the majority of those that haven't been in the old subdivision, the majority of the backyards have a concrete swale that carries water from one lot to the other. They're not allowed to build anything on it, but they also have a buffer on each side of it, so we can actually work on it if we have to. They built into the buffer, so.
So it's virtually nothing.
So they, they realize that if anything should happen, that's.
And that's what the encroachment states and, uh, that they will not be able to build onto.
Correct.
If anything, any improvements that they do on that deck will have, have to be to eliminate the encroachment. They can't build any further.
Okay, any questions?
We, we cast anyone's, like, FISA vote onto me.
Lots, lots of times. You actually changed the policy so that Nancy could deal with anything under point five, because you used to do all of them.
Yeah.
Every meeting.
Okay, Paul moves this. Any question on Paul's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Turns. Eight thirty-two. Okay, moving on to Spock days sponsorship request.
So their sponsorship has changed this year. Last ye, last year, we did the sponsorship program for six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Their layout has changed.
So what does the commander equate to on the new scale?
I am not sure because, because of the changes.
They did several changes, okay.
It kinda fall, yeah, it kinda fell in between that lieutenant and captain, so. Uh, unless council's looking at getting the opportunity to host a tent or name the baldines, that's kinda where the, where the change from lieutenant to captain goes, so. And part of this request, uh, there was also a request to, uh, because we mailed their stuff out for them and of course sent them an invoice for the two hundred dollars worth of postage that went along with that. They're asking if we would wa, waive the two hundred dollar postage and put it towards their sponsorship. It's something that they also asked in there, so. But that's up to council on what, how you, what you, what you would like to sponsor for Spock days.
Well, I like the one that has the banner showcasing your brand.
Lieutenant?
Yeah, yeah. Chair.
Okay, so Laura moves the sponsorship of lieutenant. Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? It's carried. Okay, moving on to.
Sorry.
You want?
Where the funds are gonna be drawn from?
One.
A lot of contingency.
No, 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 you're one-time grants to organizations.
No. Oh, okay, thank you.
You didn't act again.
I probably did. Somewhere in my life, but.
She was just testing us.
Yes. Well, I have to ask that same question every time, so.
Okay, any, does that offend anybody that we already approved it without the, where it came from? Okay, we'll move on then to Spock days request.
These are both motions here.
Yes, um, so the first one was the road closures, the second one is permission for the grounds by the Virginia Mitchell Park for the Beer Gardens and Slow Pitch Tournament. Next one's permission for use of the Louis Ware building for the Mini Buckers, and the fourth one is for permission for the use of the arena for the Family Fun Fair and waiver of fees.
The last one is for the request for the public works. The, the request for the public works is a normal.
And these, these motions are the same every year?
Virtually. There, there is a change, so, so the street closure, they're going to do the Taste of Vulcan, which is going to close Third Avenue up by the lodge hall, which hasn't been done before. Uh, so this council needs to be aware of that one, and then the Tech Town area as, as well, uh. So that's a change. The Beer Gardens is the same as it always has been. Mini Buckers and the use of the Louis Ware Pavilion is, uh, new to this year. And so, uh, basically what we had is any request of something that we would normally charge for, for a private, is to waive the cost, so that's why these motions are uh, made individually for them. And then again, uh, the arena, the Family Fun Fair, we would normally charge for the arena, so you're just waiving the fees for allowing that to go. And of course, what we're trying to do is because Spock days has fairly large committee and every, all their, uh, everyone has a different role. Their stuff all comes in at different times, so we could have a road closure come in in January and then somebody comes the week before Spock day and says, oh, yeah, we need to do this, this and this. We wanted them to put most of it together so council has a good scope of what the town is providing for Spock days and, you know, so that you have a good idea rather than it being spread out all over as motions from sixteen different meetings. So that's why we try to put it together as one big package.
I will move the first motion.
For, for the road closures?
Yeah, you can, you can do what the next four do.
Okay, any question on Laura's motion for the road closures? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, the next one is the use of the baldines.
Of the beer gardens.
Lyle moves that. Any question on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? It's carried, thank you.
I will move the Mini Buckers.
George Janus, Mini Bucker, use of the arena. Any question on that? Hearing none, all in favor? It's carried.
I'll move the fourth one.
Fourth one is the use of the arena for, for the Family Fun Fair. Any question on that one? Hearing none, all in favor? It's carried. And the last one is for the public works to request. Laura? Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? It's carried, thank you.
It's interesting to see the Taste of Vulcan and the Tech Town being on.
Yeah, they're trying, they're trying to add something every year, but, and some of it's been there. And also this year, too, the Kinsman Club are doing their soapbox dirty on the same weekend.
Is it usually on, uh?
They've, they've tried, they've, they've tried the Show and Shine.
Oh. Yeah.
And they felt that they would like to try this instead, so. Which is great to see, and, and, you know, whatever works. Uh, I assume they'll weigh it and Kinsman Club will decide. Okay, moving on to eleven-six, says the Community Futures Hollywood Board Member at Large Acquaintment. Everyone had an opportunity to read that Mr. McPherson has stepped down.
John was good enough to point out that, uh, threw two different, uh, stints on, on the future score to serve for nine years, almost ten, nine years and ten months. Uh, so I think we're just feeling that it's time to retire, so.
He had, he had a break in between, I think, with me.
Yes, he, yes, he did. Louise Christie sat on.
Well, that's right.
For quite, quite some time. So I've preemptively done some phoning around to some people in our community that, uh, have similar backgrounds that maybe interested in it and will advertise in the paper, because a lot of times, as you know, uh, last time we advertised, we could get a very good response. We'll, with council's permission, we'll advertise and we'll do our normal beat of the bushes to make sure that we get people to apply for it. Go from there.
Okay.
And of course.
A letter.
I ask that, uh, we do a letter of recognition for, for Gordon as well, for his time serving.
Laura moves that we go ahead with this. Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? It's carried. Okay, moving on to lease agreement.
This is my favorite one of this meeting. Forty years ago, the town entered into an agreement for the lease of the land for the curling rink, and Norman Lewis brought it back saying that the lease was about to expire. Of course, it showed up in our agreement stuff, and rather than rewriting a forty-year-old agreement and, uh, the feelings that I've gotten from the few conversations I've had with council, the arenas, the curling rink seems to be a benefit to our community, and another extension of the lease for forty more years was the most logical way to move forward with this, so we did a standard lease extension agreement. Have all the, the council's in favor of that. We will have, uh, all the parties sign it, and it will extend this until May twenty-third, two thousand and fifty-eight, and Norman informed me that she was not too worried a little bit past that.
But won't you be surprised when she brings it back again?
Well, I was gonna say, well, if she brings it back to me, I'll be concerned about how both of our lives are going.
Very well, I would say, very well.
Yeah, I would say, I would say.
So any thoughts, comments?
Chair.
Oh, sorry.
I'll make that motion that we signed the lease that lived for another forty years.
George Janus, thank you very much.
That's gonna be on record for forty years, totally.
Yeah, that's okay. I will be here, hopefully.
That's your chair.
Yeah.
Okay, any thoughts, comments?
Sounds like the, uh, most discussion we had on the solar farm.
This is the least amount of negotiations I've had to do on an agreement in an awful long time, so I was pretty pleased with them.
Okay, so hearing no questions, comments, we'll call for the question, all in favor? It's carried. Notice the motions. Hearing none. Uh, management ports, none. Camera, none. Agreement. Okay, Michelle. Any question on Michelle's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Carried, thank you, folks.